7:00 PM on September 21st, 2020, I'll call to order the Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting for September 21st, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and pursuant to the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, the Swansea ZBA will be holding their meeting remotely using the web-based program Zoom. Board members and applicants will be participating in the meeting remotely. The public may access the meeting by visiting www.zoom.us using the Zoom app or by calling 929-205-6099 and entering meeting ID number 837-62030712. If you have any difficulty accessing the meeting, please call 603-352-7411, extension 108, or email mbachler@swanzenh.gov. That's M-B-A-C-H-L-E-A-L-E-R at swanzenh.gov. More information on public access to the meetings available on the town's website at www.SwanzeNH.gov. I'll ask Beverly to call the roll and read the agenda.
Anne Karasinski? Annie, you're muted.
Anne Karasinski is here alone in my room.
Thank you. Bill Hutwelker? Not present. Brian Rutgers?
Here alone in my office.
Adam Mulhern?
I am present and I'm here alone in my room.
Keith Tebow?
I'm present, here in my office in Keene.
Bob Mitchell?
Present, alone in my office at home.
Eric Calio?
Present, I'm alone in the basement of my home.
Ruth Snyder?
He was in the woods.
In the forest.
Ruth Snyder? Thank you, Ruth.
Ruth is present?
Yes, she is.
Okay, thank you.
The Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting agenda for September 21st, 2020 is as follows. Following the call to order, there will be a vote on a regional impact statement. Then the minutes for August 17th, 2020 will be considered. Present at that meeting was Tebow, Karasinski, Rutgers, Hutwelker, Snyder, and Mitchell. Following that, public hearings. ZBA number 20-009, special exception application and variance application. Thomas Cashman requests to grant a special exception for an accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet pursuant to section four, article B2D of the zoning ordinance at 29 Swansea Lake Road. The applicant also requests to grant a variance from section three, article U.2F of the zoning ordinance to permit a home-based business that exceeds 500 square feet in area. Should this variance not be granted, the applicant requests a variance for section four, article B1, to permit a screen printing business to be conducted on the premises. The subject property is shown at tax map 31 lot 25-2 and is located in the residence district. A ZBA number 20-010 variance application. It would grant, request to grant a variance from section five, article B3 of the zoning ordinance to construct a garage that would be located in the side yard setback of the property at 209 Old Homestead Highway. The subject property is shown at tax map 36 lot nine and is located in the business district. ZBA number 20-011, variance application, Robert Stryker and Christine Elliott, request to grant a variance from section four, article B3 of the zoning ordinance to construct a garage that would be located in the front yard setback of the property at 62 Christian Hill Road. The subject property is shown at tax map 58 lot 26 and is located in the residence district. ZBA number 20-012, special exception application, Asher Construction LLC, request to grant a special exception for the removal and processing of clay, sod, loam, crushed stone, sand, or gravel for sale subject to the minimum standards established pursuant to RSA 155-E pursuant to section four, article A.2D of the zoning ordinance at 1415 Old Homestead Highway. The subject property is shown at tax map 27 lot 5-2 and is located in the rural agricultural district, and there may be other discussion and business as arises.
Thank you, Beverly.
You're welcome.
I believe the next thing on our agenda is for the, for us to determine whether any of our applications tonight have a regional impact. Does anyone have any comments or issues relative to this, these applications and their, their potential for regional impact?
I'm not seeing any. Keith?
Okay, anyone have any other thoughts?
I agree, Eric. I don't see any regional impact on the agenda.
May I request a motion to that effect?
Yeah, that's what we would, yeah, that's what we're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, just a quick point of order as it relates to, or Mr. Chamberlain for that matter.
It's fine.
If Bill's not here, do we need to seat someone for Bill for this, or is this just a general question for the board? How does that work?
That's a good question. I think what we will do, just to be on the safe side, is I will, I'll seat Bob Mitchell for Bill for this, this, this question and the first public hearing. Personally, the, just, and maybe Matthew can give us some guidance here, but something like the fourth, I guess, our fourth hearing where we have a potential, request for special exception for removal and processing of clay, sod, loam, crushed stone, and gravel. And it being located fairly, looks to me fairly well down Old Homestead Highway, the potential to have traffic maybe going through Richmond or something along those lines might have that sort of impact, traffic and, and on the roads and so forth, trucks. But the point may be moot because it's my understanding, Matthew, that there's been a request to extend that to a delay or postpone that hearing?
Keith, that is, that's correct, and I'm not sure if all the board members received the email that I had sent out earlier this afternoon from Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Asher Construction requesting a continuance of that application to your next meeting, which would be October 19th. So it is, you know, something you could take up at your meeting on, on October 19th. That being said, from my, from my perspective, given the, I guess, given the scale of what's proposed in that operation, I don't, I don't think that comes to the level of regional impact. That's my personal opinion, but I think it would be entirely appropriate just to, you know, make a motion to continue that application to October 19th and take it up on October 19th.
Okay, we could be, we can do that now.
Yep, you can do that. You can do that now.
So if folks understand that the Asher Construction and their agent have requested a continuance to next month, so maybe if we could deal with that now before we deal with the regional impact question, maybe we can entertain a motion to, to accept that request?
I'll move that we continue Asher until next month's meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Adam. It's been moved and seconded to accept Asher Construction's request for a continuance to, to next meeting in October. Any question on the motion?
This is Anne Karasinski. I have a question.
Sure.
In addition to that notification that they wanted to continue to next month, I, there was a letter that Matthew had forwarded from some individuals regarding their opinion of, of what was going on at 1415 Old Homestead Highway. So I, you know, they, they made an effort to say their concerns about minerals being removed from that property, and, and I see that it was signed by a number of people by hand, so I, I don't see, I don't see the need for them, those individuals, to, to go out and get more signatures and resubmit that. I think we should, should maintain that information for, for the next meeting. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah.
We respect their opinion.
Certainly, and just so the board knows, it's not uncommon for us to receive additional information from, from an applicant or residence after we send out that initial meeting packet to you. We try to get the information out to you a week in advance so you have time to review the materials ahead of your meeting, but understandably, things come in, and so we always will just forward that to you as a supplemental piece of information. In cases like this where an application has continued to the next meeting, any materials that we receive, those will be included in your packet for next month. So that petition that we received from abutting property owners will be in your October packet along with the letter that was provided by the abutting property owner immediately to the north. So that information will definitely still be in front of you at your meeting in October. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to continue this particular hearing until this, the 19th of October, our next meeting. Any other questions, comments, or issues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask Beverly to call the roll.
Okay. Anne Karasinski?
Um, yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Edel Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes. Motion carries?
All the motion carries, yes, all in favor.
That being said, I could, would enter, we would, we would entertain a motion on the regional impact.
And Keith, I just would add one more, one more thing. I would imagine that there's a potential that some of the callers on the, on the phone or who are listening in probably, or may, may desire to speak something about that particular application. So just want to make it clear that we will not be entertaining any further information about this particular case. We will be postponing it till next, to our next meeting in October and won't be discussing anything further about that tonight, just to make sure everyone is clear on that point.
Thank you. Motion on regional impact.
I'll make a motion that these particular, the rest of the cases, A through C, don't seem to have a regional impact, so I'd make a motion to that effect.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. It's been moved and seconded that the, the board does not feel that any of the cases that we will be hearing tonight rise to the level of having a regional impact. Any questions on the motion? Everyone understand? Okay, Beverly?
Okay. Anne Karasinski?
Yes, there is no regional impact, in my opinion.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. We have minutes from August 17th. Present at that meeting were myself, Anne, Brian, and Bob. That was August 17th minutes. We didn't hear any cases that night. We were going over procedural issues. Anyone care to make a motion on the minutes of those that were present?
I move that we accept those minutes.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Anne Karasinski.
Thank you, Anne. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2020 as presented. Any questions? Edits? Changes on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I will pass it to Beverly.
Anne Karasinski?
I vote to accept the minutes, yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Adam was not there. Keith Tebow?
Yes, I.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Ruth Snyder was there. Ruth? I haven't heard, I cannot hear.
Can't even see her.
I don't see her.
I thought I heard her earlier. Perhaps I was wrong.
Yeah, I even, I don't see her. And usually she'll chat it up.
Okay. Well, the minutes, the motion passes by unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the business of the meeting. ZBA number 20-009, a special exception application and variance application. Thomas Cashman requests to grant a special exception for an accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet pursuant to section four, article B2D of the zoning ordinance at 29 Swansea Lake Road. The applicant also requests to grant a variance from section three, article U.2F of the zoning ordinance to permit a home-based business that exceeds 500 square feet in area. Should this variance not be granted, the applicant requests a variance from section four, B1, to permit a screen printing business to be conducted on the premises. The subject property is shown at tax map 31 lot 25-2 and is located in the residence district. Matthew, if you could help us with this, tee this up a bit for us?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Keith. So in this case, as you mentioned, the applicant is first requesting a special exception from section four, article B2D of the zoning ordinance. So this relates to what is permitted for an accessory structure in the residence district. If you're proposing a structure greater than 1,000 square feet, that requires a special exception regardless of how you plan on using that structure. So in this case, the applicant is proposing a structure that would have a footprint of 1,536 square feet, so 536 square feet, greater than that threshold for a special exception. The property owner in this case runs a screen printing business. They do have a storefront located on Emerald Street in Keene, and this is, this is kind of their retail storefront where they get deliveries and foot traffic. They're looking to use this accessory structure proposed for their property for the decorating process as part of that screen printing business. So this wouldn't have any foot traffic, and there wouldn't be any deliveries to this location. It's more just kind of the, the processing of the, the printmaking. That type of business or that type of use does fall under our home-based business provisions in the zoning ordinance. That's in section three, article U.2 of the zoning ordinance. However, the zoning ordinance sets a limit for a home-based business that it cannot exceed 500 square feet in area for that home-based business. In this case, the applicant is anticipating they'll need about 1,200 square feet in that accessory structure for that screen printing, the screen printing activities. So that's 700 square feet more than what's allowed for a home-based business typically. And then the remaining, you know, 300 odd square feet would just be used for, for personal uses for the property owners. So those are the two requests, a special exception for that accessory structure with a footprint of 1,536 square feet, and then a variance to allow that home-based business to be 1,200 square feet in size. If the variance for the additional square footage for the home-based business, if that does not prevail, the applicant has requested a variance simply to run a business off of that property. So this would be a variance from section four, article B1, which is the list of permitted uses in the residence district. And this type of use of screen printing business is not typically allowed in the residence district. That's why we have the home-based business provisions in place is to allow for that type of exception. But they're only asking that variance if the, the additional square footage for the home-based business is not approved, just so that they don't have to go through a, a second application process in that, in that case. So the department heads were notified of this application back on September 3rd, and we have not received any comments from department heads. The notice of the public hearing was mailed out to abutters on September 8th, and we posted in three public places on September 10th, and the notice was published in the Keene Sentinel on September 12th. To date, I have not received any comments from, from members of the public on this application. And I, I have Thomas and Michelle Cashman here, who I have promoted to panelists, so they will be able to, to address the board. I do have their application up, too. I'm going to share my screen just so we have that application from them to look at. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can turn it over to the Cashmans to present their proposal.
Any questions of the board at this time? All right, we'll ask the applicant to explain what we're looking to do here. This is a public hearing. If there are members of the public here who wish to comment on this, they will be given the opportunity. We will first hear from the applicant an explanation of what they're looking to do.
Am I on?
You're on.
Oh, well, thank you guys for taking the time. My name is Thomas Cashman. I do live at 29 Swansea Lake Road in Swansea. My wife and I just recently bought Gemini Screen Print located in Keene, and we would love to have the opportunity to do all of our decorating on our own property. As Matthew had said, we do have a storefront located in Keene. All deliveries come here for numerous reasons, but they do come here, and so our, our retail is all done out of this, out of this store here in Keene. What we would primarily be doing in Swansea would just be the decorating process of, of printing on the garments, boxing them up, and then brought, bring, bring back to our store and our, and our van for the, for the resale purpose. It's primarily a family-run business. It's my wife, myself, my son-in-law is currently working with me, and then in the Keene store, my wife has a graphic designer and a part-time employee. As far as what, what I explained with, with Matthew and I forwarded some information, all the, all of our cleaning agents that we use are all soybean-based, so they're environmentally safe. It's an eco-friendly corporate, corporation that makes them. It does require a little bit of additional steps for us, but it's a safer environment. The, the building would be properly ventilated. We currently use rubber gloves and so forth with doing any cleaning. Placitol inks, which is what we use to decorate, is a, is a, is a safe product. There's no side effects, no, nothing harmful from it, so it is a, you know, an environmentally safe procedure that we do.
And at this point, any questions from the board?
I have two questions. Eric Calio here. The first, where it says shared driveway, what is that parcel to the left of the subject parcel for Thomas Cashman? Is that another person's property?
Yes, it is. Chad Wellington is the owner of it. The driveway is, is well over twice a normal width of a driveway, so it's, it's plenty wide. I have spoken with, with every one of my buddy neighbors, with the exception of Manning, and they're, they're all very supportive of, of, you know, if we were to have the opportunity. I currently plow my neighbor's driveway anyway, so I take care of the, the driveway and everything that, that goes along with that.
And then my other question is, are people, will they park in the driveway, like to the side? Is that, is that going to be like one-way access or two-way access?
The, from, from, from the Swansea Lake Road, the driveway runs in roughly about 50 feet, and then it forks off, and then our driveway is about 600 feet back to our dwellings. Our plan, as I shared with, with Matthew, is, is we're only going to have two to three employees, one being myself, who lives there, so all the, any parking would be well off of the shared driveway, well back behind the trees, away from the main road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would just, this is Matthew. I would just note, too, that, you know, I did, I did meet with Mr. Cashman and reviewed what they're proposing to do on the property in, in terms of a home-based business, and as I said, we have a section in the zoning ordinance that, that looks at home-based businesses, and everything that's proposed would meet those requirements except the, the square footage question, the request for 1,200 square feet versus 500 square feet. So if, if the zoning board granted that variance for the additional square footage for a home-based business, that still needs, that needs approval by the, the planning board, and the planning board does look at things like number of employees, parking, things like that. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that, that that's an additional review that is done by, by the planning board.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Cashman, this is Bob Mitchell. I'm looking at your driveway from Google Maps Street View, and I've also looked at the map, plot plan you've submitted. It, it appears to me that this structure will not be visible from Swansea Lake Road. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. There is a, and actually, there's a great buffer of trees between the Swansea Lake Road and where this, where the building is. As far as visibility, I, even my neighbors, all of our neighbors, we can't see each other. We're rural enough, which makes it, you know, which is really a nice thing, not just for the home-based business, but for, for, for living anyways, you know, just that type of privacy.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Adam, I think I saw your hand up.
Mr. Chamberlain, I have a question here to, for the Cashmans. Seeing that the heart of what we're talking about really is hinging on this square footage concern, and not knowing a whole lot about screen printing myself, would you maybe kind of run us through why you need the space that you're, you're looking to, to use? Just, I'm very curious.
Absolutely. When we purchased Gemini Screen Print in January, one of the purchases that we got along with the actual, the business, the customer base, was an automatic printing press. An automatic printing press, basically, you, you, you put your stencils, that's what prints your garments, on the machine, and then it automatically prints everything, and you have two, two people that one would load the shirts, one would take the shirts off. The footprint of that alone is 20 feet in diameter, so that, that takes up a great deal of space. And then when you add in, I have two manual presses for smaller runs, so if you're doing, you know, you know, up to 150, you would, you would, you would manually press, and that, that footprint is about nine feet in diameter each machine. And then you add some tables of where you lay out your shirts to, you know, prepare to print, and then when they come out of the dryer, you put them back onto the tables to fold, and so it's just, it, it requires some room, you know, to, to, to do everything that you need to do, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And so you're, you're saying that there's, if I just get you correctly, there'd be three machines, one automatic, and then two manual, and I might be oversimplifying, just getting a kind of an idea.
Yes, yes, well, there's, there's a dryer which dries our garments, it's called a conveyor dryer, so basically, it's electric dryer. So basically, it's electric dryer that the shirts go through. But as far as the printing portion, the automatic press is is the is the big one. And then the reason for the two manuals, right now, currently, I print on the manuals. Then one of my manuals prints all my my T-shirts, my sweatshirts. And the second, the second press does my sleeves, does my tote bags. That, you know, the specialty where you it's a smaller run and it's smaller platen. And so I leave the one press all ready for the for the for the standard garments. And the second one is for the supplementary, you know, the, you know, I I do, I do four-inch bandanas for Douglas Toys here in town. You know, and so those are special platen that that's used to design the apparel for them.
Okay. And so just just for one last thing real quick, so I kind of picture this in my head, unless you have some images. So you're you're you have an automatic machine, two manual machines, a dryer, and then some tables that you would be using to lay out the various garments and so forth that go through the process. Would there be additional equipment necessary down the road? Or is this encompass your belief of what you're required to to run and operate this business in this fashion?
Well, for for every for every job that you do, you you have a screen. So you have screen storage. So currently, I have about probably 65 to 75 screens that are in different racks that I built that this stacks them up. If if I was to grow beyond where we're at. You know, say, say, the business was continued to to grow, to to require a second automatic press, I would easily outgrow the facility. And so at that point, it would justify to, you know, buy something obviously of greater size. Is, you know, as as long as I'm in the two to three employees that I don't believe and I don't see why we would go beyond the the square quarters, the square footage that we are requesting.
Thank you very much, Cashman. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Yeah, this is Brian Rudress, so I have two questions for you. The first one is your automatic machine, I'm assuming that's a circular multi-station screen machine?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And your manual machines, I'm just curious. I was trying to also find you on Google Maps. Bob did a good job, apparently I was unsuccessful. So where are you located as far as proximity to Manning Driscoll?
Manning's house is actually up the road from us, but his, according to when I came and looked at the tax map, his his boundary line comes down about halfway across the street in the center of my property. So I I went to the state website, what was actually considered in a butter, even though he's across the road. And the state record, you know, the state says that, you know, even if it's divided by a road, that they should be considered in the butter.
Okay. All right, so you don't anticipate noise during off hours being a consideration or a problem for your actual butters, do you?
Absolutely not. The 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 only noise is I is I, when I communicate and I talked with Matthew, is is the the circular machine, you're absolutely correct. It's 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 in a circle. It has 10 stations, eight different colors that it is able to print. And it's run off of a of an air compressor. My my plan is to have an air compressor in a soundproofed area. Our operating hours will only be 8:30 to 5:00 or might even be 4:30, but it'll be Monday through Friday. It won't be on weekends. You know, I have no desire to, you know, work multiple shifts by any means. And so other than a normal air compressor, that's would be the loudest noise that really anybody should hear at all, if they do.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I was actually asking the question, unless I'm wrong, which I I stand to be corrected by our our committee, but I don't believe I am, is that once we permit the physical size of this building and location of it to be used for, you know, a home business, then going forward, after you've sold the property and generations down the road, it's still permitted for that use. So that's why I was asking those questions, that it might be one thing today, but it might be an entirely different operation a few years down the road. But that's why I was asking. Okay, thank you, Oliver.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone's had a crack at it. Ian, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I I was just reading through the, you know, the uses that qualify for home-based business. And I I call this more, I guess, light machine work. But I'm thinking of his dryers, like the the Athens pizza, where you slide it in one side and it dries. You know, it cooks the pizza and comes out the other. So that's kind of like his clothing dryer and I was getting hungry while I was doing that. But no, I I don't have any particular questions at at this time. Thank you.
Okay, just want to make sure you had a chance. Mr. Cashman, the there was a appointment, it might have been by Matthew, I'm not sure, but that there'll be no deliveries to the site. What is your intend, what is your expected production numbers? And I'm presuming that but not only materials, but the what is what is used, the inks and that kind of a thing, garments? And I heard you say tote bags and bandanas or scarves or something? How much would you expect to be producing at this shop on, say, a weekly or monthly basis in numbers of units?
It's it's hard for me to give exact numbers because they can fluctuate, and especially with this this COVID pandemic. The numbers from what I had looked at from the financial side is definitely down. Primarily, we look to do two to three jobs a day that usually run around 75 to 150 garments. Although, you know, when 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 the when the when the economy turns, you know, comes back as it normally would, we should have a higher production. As I said, the the way the way, when we order garments, the garments come to the store and and our our person, our clerk here separates the orders. So we'll order, it might be six, eight boxes of garments. And and then within those boxes, they might be three or four jobs that have to be separated to each of the customers. Daily, I come in in the evening and deliver whatever we printed and pick up boxes for the for the next jobs that are that are down the line. So that's why we said that the deliveries will not come. Secondly, any delivery charges, your 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 shipping fees are a lot less when they're shipped to a commercial property versus residential. So obviously, that's a no-brainer when you're looking at your bottom line. But everything, everything absolutely comes here. And and like I said, it does get, you know, separated by our shipping and receiving clerk. And and then, like I said, I pick up, I have a small Ford Transit van that every night I'll bring the orders in, drop them off and pick up the orders to bring back home.
So the deliveries will be primarily you?
Correct, correct, yes. And it would be, it would be nothing more than me running into, you know, running in and out of the driveway is, you know, as I would as a homeowner. You know, once or twice a day, and so.
And there's a there's a section of our home occupation. And home occupations and home-based businesses that talks about the you shall not result in the alteration of the residential appearance of the dwelling unit or the lot in which it is located. And is clearly incidental to its use as a residence. I maybe this doesn't shouldn't come up until our second of our variance application. But a 1,500-square-foot structure. To me, it could case could be made that that's altering the residential appearance of the lot. This seems to be, with all due respect, pushing the limits of a home-based occupation, which is the examples that it's not a full list, but the examples include that we would expect that we would see here or that was put in specifically listed in our ordinance are hairdressing, dressmaking, tutoring, offices for lawyers or engineers or architects, real estate brokers, accountants, mobile veterinarians, shoe repair, web design, software design, artists and craftspeople. This appears to be to me a manufacturing facility that's to support a retail business by which volume and production are critical. If you were screen printing 10 shirts a day for a very niche, say, I don't know, say, an animal rights cause, PETA, or something along those lines. But your retail business is going to be critically, this this shop appears to me to be critical to your retail business. And it seems to me this is a, not a home-based occupation, but a business of sorts. So it certainly supports the retail business that you have. So I struggle with this from a size perspective and a use perspective. So I guess I'll ask that how would you say that this building you're putting on there and the production and the and the and the what's going to go on inside is incidental to the residential use of this property?
I mean, obviously, you know, it is to support our business in Keene. And and I have, I'm not denying that, or I'm not trying to hide behind. Would talk with Matthew, he laid out a couple of options that that we would approach, you know, to to come to you guys to to talk about. I completely understand. You know, part of what I'm, what I will do regardless, you know, if if we can work through this, it's going to be cited to be like the home, so vinyl siding. So an appearance, it's going to look like a large garage from a from a visual visual standpoint. But, you know, I I understand what you're saying. And I think what you're, when you refer on, you gave me the list of 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 businesses, those are more hobby businesses. And and you're correct, you're correct in saying that this is not a hobby business. This is our, you know, this is our business. And I and I understand what you're saying.
I mean, this this, this is a this is our home occupation and home-based business. This section of our ordinance. That leads one to believe that primarily a home is used or a piece of a home is used, not a, not a. I mean, in some cases, people may use their garages for an office or but I don't think we've ever entertained a request of of this size or 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 a use that is based, is production-based, units-based. I mean, I I some of what I might have put out would be hobby units, but a an accountant or a lawyer or an engineer is not, it's not a hobby. They're looking, you know, and that's of the size and scale that we typically see. So I just, at this point, I just just, I struggle with this. And maybe some of the board can help me of this seems to me a business that would should be cited in a business zone or someplace that is intending to see. I mean, it fits in a in the number of employees you have now. And that it is happens to be on your property. But again, I struggle with with finding why we would not have, would not find out home businesses of similar size in 1,500-square-foot facilities that might be could be anything. I mean, we could, you know, we could have a major food producer, producing food. I mean, I know this is one that's relatively seems very safe. I don't I don't see any issue with safety. I don't see any issue with retail traffic. I just, I just see a something here that seems more akin to a, like, as I said, a a production-based business that that is is seems to be out of character with what we what our home-based business ordinance intends. Matthew, do you have any anything here or any other board member want to comment?
I I do. This is Ann Karasinski. So I was reading the same section that you were, and I was, I was looking at his machinery as more of what what I would call light machine work. And where Mr. Cashman resides at that home. And and the business is his, so it's in, you know, this this building, which they're putting in is it it's a pretty big garage, but it's going to look like the house. So I, you know, as far as production is concerned, it doesn't, you know, the number of pieces that he's making, I'm not sure that's as as much of a concern. Like how many T-shirts or how many bandanas or how many tote bags that he's going to be making there, you know, there? Because he's just decorating them, he's not making anything all, you know, it's it's decoration. So I I get your concern. I'm just, you know, I'm not sure that that it's our purview about. I I think those are just examples of of what would qualify. And, you know, that that machinery doesn't, it's not going to make a lot of noise. It's, you know, it's, he's coloring things. So I I don't know, that's just, that's just another way I'm I'm looking at it. I I see your point as well. But I think we're, you know, we're kind of moving into a you know, it's his property, he owns the business, it's his house. So he's one of the people that's going to be there working. So that's just my view. I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say. Over.
This Eric Calio. Yes, my comment is it, I mean, from hearing the ordinance and reading it, that artists are allowed to have home-based work or businesses, rather. So I guess my question to the applicant is, how do you consider this to be art or being an artist as a home-based occupation for the type of work that you're trying to do there?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand your question. Say that again, please.
So what my question is, is based upon the ordinance, it seems that artists are allowed to have home-based occupations. So what I'd like to hear from you is, how do you feel this particular business or application you put forward? How do you feel that that would qualify as like art or artist work?
I'm not, I'm not trying to to say that it it qualifies as artist work. I mean, what it literally, our process is like Anne had said, we're we're decoration. We don't process, we don't have machinery that that sews, it cuts machine, you know, apparel. You know, unfortunately, for our side, you know, the 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 business that we do is not like an accountant, which requires very minimal space or, you know, or potentially a hairdresser. But because of the the process that's involved, it is bigger equipment. As it does have a conveyor dryer, it looks like a big pizza oven, absolutely. It goes on, the shirts go on a conveyor, come out 12 feet on the other side, takes so long to dry through that process. And and so it's, it does require more space. But, you know, it, you know, we're, we're asking because it is our business. And we would love like to be able to do do the process and of the, you know, printing on the shirts, packaging, bringing them back to the store at our location, rather than, you know, having to to purchase another piece of property or, you know, an additional lease payment, you know, for for two, two pieces of, you know, of you know, real estate.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
If I may, this is Matthew. I just wanted to follow up on, I think it was maybe Brian had made a comment earlier about, you know, if if a variance is approved for this home-based business to have 1,200 square feet, would that allow a a future home business to move in there and have 1,200 square feet without the need for coming back to the board? I would just say if if the board were to grant a variance, it is just for that specific that specific use, the screen printing business that's proposed by the Cashmans, as has been discussed. A lot of this is based on the need for the variance, the request for the variance, a lot of that's based on the the size of the machinery. And that's why they they feel the need for an additional space than what's allowed. So from my perspective, this is not giving a potential future business the, like, a free ride to come in and use 1,200 square feet for some unknown business in the future. The, like a free ride to come in and use 1200 square feet for some unknown business in the future. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And then just in response to, um, some of the discussion that's been had, I, I certainly. I understand kind of both sides of this. Um, I think, you know, that's one reason why. We, we decided to come forward with, um. The variance application for the additional square footage. For the home based business, but also request the variance for. Just operating a business, um, on this property. Just kind of being able to see it from both of those sides. Um, you know, from reading the zoning ordinance. For a home based business, it does, does mention as Ann referred. To this, uh, li- light machine work and woodworking. And I felt that this generally fit into that. Type of home based business use. And just the fact that they needed more space for those large machinery, that large machinery, I thought it was. Kind of a. Something to bring forward to the board for consideration for that variance.
Okay. Thank you. Adam?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had one question. This is maybe, um. Would be towards, towards Matthew. You can help me out with this, but taking aside the special exception use of this. Particular structure. If they were to come in. The, the, the applicant and to be building a garage that was of this size. Used only for the purpose of a garage. Is there anything here that we're seeing that this couldn't be built for that size, structure, shape? And so forth, setting aside the business use case of it. Because I think one of the things that we're considering here. Is how structures on this property are going to change the perspective of the property and the use of that property. Just curious about Matthew. Is there anything here? I'm just looking at the setback. Could you help me with that?
Yeah, no, that's a good. A good question. Um, yeah, just to clarify, I mean, the, the first request is the, you know, the special exception to put up a. 1536 square foot structure on the property. And the board. In considering that, you really just need to look at your special exception criteria and that should be, that should be taken up separate from. The request to, to do the home based business. Um. And. So I, you really need to kind of treat the two. Separately. Um, I mean, from a setback, they need setbacks, um, for that structure itself. You know, I can't. I don't want to weigh in on, on, um. Whether or not the board should find that, that structure meets the special exception criteria. Just to say, try to kind of treat them separately. The structure itself and then the proposed use within it for the home based business.
Thank you, Matthew.
I don't know if that really answered your question. I don't want to.
I, I see where you're going to one. We have. Really. Two and potential three. Pieces of relief that's being requested here. First being a special exception for the structure. Or footprint greater than 1,000 square feet and we're well great, we're certainly well above. 1,000 square feet and we've had these before and we've played special attention to them before. Because we've had issues with these before where a, someone who says they need to store some cars. I believe they kind of turns, sort of morphs into an auto shop in a residential neighborhood. I mean, I think we're, so I think we're, we're. We have to talk about the use. Even though we're, we're just being asked for an accessory structure. I, I still hesitate that it's incidental to the home. It's. You know, 1500 square feet set up for production. It really, really, um. So I, I think as we look at this special exception, we. As we've done in the past, we, we look at the use and oftentimes it is for storage of a, most recently, I think a motorhome. Kind of a storage space that we had when someone was wanting to put one of these things up, some large vehicles that they own and things of that sort. But I do, again, I, 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 I. You know, light machine work is not necessarily a 20 foot circular machine with. Several other adjacent machines. I, I, at least I believe the ordinance was set up for. For someone with a bandsaw and wanting to do. Scroll work, uh, from that perspective. So, um, but that's, so what we have here, we have in front of us right now is, is, is this special exception for an accessory structure with a. Footprint greater than 1,000 square feet. Then, and then I think separately. We also will be asked to take up a variance allowing a home based business that. Triples the area that we have set aside for home based businesses from 500 feet to 1500 square feet. And then, of course. Should we not have a variant, that variance granted, we have yet a. Requesting a variance to do a screen bit printing business on the premises. We haven't even gotten there yet about how that would happen. I guess one thing I want to make sure that we, we recognize is this is a public hearing. I'm not sure if we have anyone else on the. In, in the crowd. That would like to speak or make a comment. Uh, Matthew might be able to help me there, but certainly if there is anyone else listening in, they're. They're free to speak. You're muted, Matthew.
Thank, thank you, Keith. Uh, right now I just have, um, another applicant later on the agenda and Mike Jasmine, our code enforcement officer.
Okay. So there are no members of the public here at this point in time. Before we get to this, well, before we get to this, I guess this. This vote on the special exception for an accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet. Any other comments or? Issues before we close the public hearing?
Keith, uh, I have no questions, but I will have comments and I'll save them for our discussion after we close it.
All right. Anyone else have anything to say before we close the public hearing?
I echo Mitchell's. Motion Mitchell's comment.
All right. Well, I guess hearing no other, and I guess Mr. And Mrs. Cashman, is there anything else you'd like to say? We. Because once we close the public hearing and we deliberate and begin to talk about this, um, any input, we, we, we're not allowed to take any more input from, from yourself or the. The non-public that's here. So is there anything else you folks would like to add? At, at this point.
You know, nothing other than that we've, my wife and I absolutely want to be transparent and be very front. Forward with you guys to let you know what's going on because I don't want to. You know, look for storage for some vehicles and then open up a shop, you know, type of situation. We want to be very honest and clear with what our intentions were with it. And, and if there was an opportunity in either direction that we could go, you know, to take, you know, to have that opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate, and then we do appreciate that very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you now.
Thank you.
I'll ask one quick question, Keith.
Sure, Adam.
Would this business, and this is a question towards Mr. And Mrs. Cashman here. Would this business be able to run within the parameters of a 500 foot square foot, or is that just an impossibility based upon the equipment?
It would, it would, it would minimize our, our opportunity with what we could use for equipment. As a small hobby shop, you could run one dryer and one press within that 500 square feet, but it would eliminate the opportunity to. To have the, the bigger equipment to be more competitive in pricing. To be more competitive, you know, with, uh, the other businesses in town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have one last question. Anne Karasinski. I understood and maybe I'm confusing it because I read all these this afternoon, all these. That they're going to use some of that, um, accessory structure for, for family use too, that, that the entirety of it is. Is. Is, is not all for the business. Am I correct? You're going to be using some of it for the, for the, for the family?
Yeah, it's correct. What, um, what, what are, what are our requests for the variance? We would love to have the opportunity to use the space because. You know. You got a two car garage, you put two cars in there and you fill it with clutter. And now you wish you had a three car garage, that type of thing, but.
Right.
If, if, if we were to be given guidelines that, that we could only use what we could. Then yeah, absolutely. I mean, my, my wife's car would go in there. So she's already claimed that first off, you know, things like that.
Right.
But that, that's why we, we went this route to, you know, if we could have the opportunity, we'd love it, but if, if, if this is how you feel, we need to stay within your guidelines. Then we're, we're more than happy to, to work within that perimeter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well. We'll close the public hearing for this first request to grant a special exception for an accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet. Pursuant to section four, article B two D of the zoning ordinance, uh, at 29 Swansea Lake Road. Anyone have any comments? Bob, I think you had indicated you might have a, something to say.
Yeah, I, I've got a couple of comments. Uh, this, uh. This seems very similar. To any number of substantial garages. That we have approved. In. Settings like this. Now, I know it's owned residential. But you know, it's not quarter acre, half acre lots in Swansea. It's not one acre lots on Centerview Drive or Crescent Drive. In Swansea Center. It's a five acre lot. I think we all know what Swansea Lake Road looks like. And, and I think we have. Approved any number. Of substantial. Auxiliary, uh, structures. To be used to store and in most cases repair. Trucks and heavy equipment. So on this part of the question, and you've, you've parsed it very. Very clearly, Keith, but on this part of the question. I'm, I'm relatively open. And the second point is. Uh, it's not visible from the road. So on a five acre lot, not visible from the road. In this part of town, there's quite a bit of this. I'm, I'm reasonably open to this. This half of the equation.
All right. Anyone else? Before we get to the questions? All right, I'm seeing none here. We'll, we'll move on to the questions.
I'll just, I'll just note something real quick, Keith.
Thanks, Adam.
It's, it's interesting. We've spent a lot of time in, in the last, say, six to eight months here with meetings. Where this is actually the reverse scenario where you have a business style. District or, or, or application in which a residential. Need is. We have the absolute opposite here, which is just interesting to note. That's all I had to say right this second.
And I agree, we're usually warning, warning folks who want to put a single family home in a business district that the business could be hanging up there. We're now looking at a single family district that's. A business sort of use of, of some scale will be looking to go in.
This is Anne Karasinski. I think I have a comment along those similar lines and I think. We're going to see a, a shift in the economy. Perhaps towards more questions like this as, as people are. Are looking to be away from other people. You know, I, I think we're going to see a change in the way people do business and, and how people are employed and. For all the people, myself included, who are currently working remotely. And, and carving out that space within our, you know, I mean, I don't own my own business, but I can see. I can see where we might get approached by, uh, with similar questions in the future that are similar to this one. So. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, uh, we can go to the questions then. Folks comfortable going to the questions? And we have, um. In addition to Adam. Myself, Adam. Ann and Brian, we have Bob seated for. Bill Hutwalker. So the question number one. And we'll take these and we'll, we'll look at these separately because it is sort of a two, two part question. The proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in that district. Bob?
Going to have to get specific here. And, and I don't have my map in front of me. I, I think of Falwell Farms down there, uh, the Pappas operation. Is, is that rural ag or is that? Residential as this one is. Does anyone have a map in front of them?
Matthew might be our best bet.
Well.
I do know they're, they're, they're boarding horses primarily down there in that, in that particular business, some incidental work. That goes along with that. And I, and I don't think that was ever came to us as a home based operation.
And I, I believe that property is actually in the residence district. It's very close by.
Horses take up a lot of space.
There, there is a business office there. And this heavy equipment storage.
Uh, no, we actually, we actually made sure they didn't. They, they do produce some loan. They mix the horse manure. With, with, with loan to make a, to make a, to make a loan, but we were clear that we didn't want their heavy equipment on that site. And. I've been watching it pretty closely and I haven't really seen anything on that site.
Well, I'm going to have my neck out and say that it is somewhere.
Okay. So you answer yes?
Yes.
Okay, um, Eric, I, I mean, sorry, Adam?
I would just say from a similarity perspective, I'm trying to think about, uh, cases that we've. Passed and, you know, trying to understand, taking into consideration the size of the operation. And then understanding what's going on inside that, that area. I know we did a, uh. Special variance for, uh. I believe it was Stone Septic for. Housing, or housing, uh. Septic equipment, right? The, the actual trucks. And I'm trying to think in terms of recall how big that structure was, how big that facility was. There is a similarity in that the use of the business structure would have. You know, you're storing things within the facility, not necessarily making things within the facility like your, this, this particular applicant's, um, asking. But there's a similar scope to both of these businesses being instrumental to the operation of their businesses. And, uh, and the sizing and also the fact that both residential neighborhoods and, and, and properties. So from that perspective. I will say yes that we, because we've seen things similar and, and have said yes to it. So from that perspective, I would say yes.
Okay. Ann?
Yes, well, I, so I'm looking at it and. And I feel similarly, um, I've seen. Uh, and these aren't things that we voted on because I've only been on the board for less than a year at this point, but I have seen. Large structures in residential areas where, where businesses conducted and, and those were. Those were approved and. Don't. You know, they may not be that similar to the home itself, but from the description of the, of, of the homeowner and of his business and his intent to keep. The, um, that the, the structure is similar to his own home so that it's in it. You know, the neighbors are there. So I, I believe that. Similar uses have been approved in the past. So I would. I would say it. Based on the location that it is and in the context of the dwellings around it. And. I'd say yes, I'd say it would be similar to other uses. Yes.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, so this was a tough one for me and I think the dialogue and the team has been pretty good. I have a home based business and I think that the intent. And the, uh. Black and white written language. Sometimes conflict with each other in that I think there's merit in the argument that this home based business was not intended to be a manufacturing outfit. However. There's also merit in the case that this is a five acre lot that's out in the area where there's, you know, farms and a residential district, more than one out there. Actually. His Johnson lettering is out there. They're doing manufacturing work and. So, and you know, across the street from him, you know, home based electricians, you know, him and his sons of, uh, electrical. Corporation running out of there. So. All of that said, uh, yes.
Thank you. I will vote no. This, to me, this is a, not a home based business. This is, uh. The business is based in Keene. This is a production facility. It is in my, with all due respect, I appreciate the Cashman's in there and their, and their forthrightness. That is very, very, um. Appreciated from my perspective. But I don't see how this meets the ordinance that Swansea. Has on its books for. A use. Home base use. It's not home based. It's building a manufacturing facility on a. On a, on a, on a, on a home. It's not incidental to the home. It's not an office in the cellar where someone could actually operate their entire. Accounting business out of, um, so. I will, I will know that this is not a proposed use similar to one or more already authorized in the district. So the second question we have here would be, is it an appropriate location for such a use? So it's the same question, but separate parts. So we'll, we'll move on to this question and go to Adam?
Oh, I think in terms of keeping in line, alignment with my previous answer to the beginning side of that, that I would say that part of why I voted yes was the nature of the property's size and proximity to the road and proximity to other, 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 other properties and the, and the setbacks to, to those properties. So from that perspective, on this particular case, I do think that this building is an appropriate location for that type of business on that property. So I would say yes.
Thank you. Brian?
You're going to have to come back to me on this one because this is the part that I struggled with. So.
We'll come back to you.
Just interrupt for a moment for the sake of the minutes and clarity in the minutes. Mr. Chairman, are you discussing the, the second special exception criteria or something else?
There is, in my opinion, it's the first question, but, but there are two questions in that question from my perspective. Is the proposed use similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in that district? And, and, and I've, I've taken the second part and split it off. I guess we, I'm not sure we should do that, but we were already on that road. But the question is now that we're, is before us, is this an appropriate location for that use? So it's basically part two of the first question.
I'd say, thank you.
Sure. Probably went back to Brian. So, Ann?
Yes. I, again, thinking, I, I think of these two questions as being somewhat similar. So within the context of the, the home where it is now in relation to the neighbors and this, the supporting business that, that they're, this, you know, what they're building, I do not believe that it would be causing a reduction of the, the property within that district.
Yeah, we're not, we're not on question two yet. And again,
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is, it is, if you look at question number one, is the, we, we dealt with the fact that whether the, we voted on whether the proposed use, and we maybe should have voted these as one. And I, and I apologize if I'm, if I'm confusing things, but I've always seen these as two different questions.
Oh, I see.
Same question. So is this, the question we're asking is that second part of question one, is this an appropriate location for the, for the use?
Well, if I look at it from there, I don't believe it changes my, my, my answer. I, I feel that, as I understand Mr. Cashman's description of what he's using this for is that it's, it's, it's in support of his business, which is based in Keene. It is not the primary use of the business. I, I'm hearing that it, it is a location to allow him to spread out and, and do, you know, special runs. So my feeling is, at least from that, from my perspective, it, it would be an appropriate location. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I vote yes. And I thought I had voted yes for both of them.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Better next time.
Okay.
Back to you, Brian.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
Um, that's it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, did someone vote before Ann? Was there, was there a vote on the second part?
Adam.
Oh, he did. And what was that vote? So I was so confused. I didn't record it properly.
It was a yes. We've had four yeses so far.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I'm not going to belabor the point, but for the same reasons, and it's probably why this is the two-part question, but I'll vote no. And I won't necessarily repeat what I, what I've, what I've said. So we will move on to question two, the real question two. Would such approval not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Again, could be a two-part question, but we'll stay with, we'll stay with it. This is one, one question. So should, would the approval not reduce the value of any property in the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? We'll start with Ann.
We could make it three questions and have fun.
Yeah, I know. It could be four questions.
So I, I'll, I thought I was voting already that I didn't feel that it would reduce. So within the context of that, of where it's located, I, I don't feel that it would reduce the, the property in the district or be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Brian?
We don't have any evidence that says that it will. We don't have any concerned neighbors or butters that have said they feel that it will. We don't have any proof. At the risk of starting a conversation that has absolutely nothing to do with this, but is germane to the process, I don't want to be caught in a position again where I vote no on a question and I'm forced to vote no for the actual application, which I absolutely categorically disagree with that process.
Right.
I'm going to say, no, there's, there's no evidence that would decrease any values.
Bob?
I just want to clarify. I think his no was a yes.
Yeah.
Because that's a negative question.
It is one of those negative questions.
It is a negative question, Bob, and you're right. So I'm sorry, Bev, that is a yes to the question of no.
So, I'm sorry, just so that I understand, you're voting yes that such approval would reduce the value?
Saying, saying yes, not reduce. As I conquered, they can't quite understand the English language. They have to put a double negative in the twist here. So I say yes, it will not reduce any value.
That's, I think was the same vote we had already.
Yes, Bev, that's the question that's on the screen here.
Okay. So, okay, so I'm, I'm looking at, I, I thought we had, we gotten rid of that double negative and had raised the question, would such approval reduce the value? Hadn't we not, hadn't you guys agreed to get rid of the double negative?
Yeah, I, I will, I will back you up on that, Bev. Actually, in the application that was, 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 and the materials that were brought into our packet, it is written in the positive format.
Yeah, that's what I have too. So that's what's.
Okay, and I apologize if I, if this is my mistake. I thought we were, the criteria I have on the screen, these are the criteria from the zoning ordinance. And I know we had discussed this a few months ago. I thought we had decided just to use the criteria as written in the zoning ordinance versus how it's stated in the application. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood that direction. So.
It doesn't matter to me. I just want to record it properly. So, so what are, you're voting now on with such approval? I'm sorry, please rephrase the question so I know what to write in the minutes. Is it not that such approval will not reduce? Is that what it's, okay, okay.
Such approval, yes. That is the question that was on the screen.
Right.
Okay, so.
The question, oh, go ahead, Beverly.
Okay, so will such, will such approval, such approval will not reduce? And I have a, a yes from Ann and a no or yes from Brian.
Yes. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry.
Right, Adam?
I would suggest that maybe for the next application, we switch this around, but, you know, horses and, and we're already halfway through, so. So to that end, there's been no evidence that's been, been given in testimony or otherwise that would say that the, would be a reduction in property value. I am a little concerned about the noise as it relates to, I don't know how loud a screen printing piece of equipment is. And I don't, I know how loud a compressor is, and even a small one's loud. And that would bother me beyond belief if I was sitting next to that all day long. So I'm struggling a little bit with this because they're, they're tied in. I don't see a reduction that there, there's potential for property value, but I could see this being obnoxious.
Okay.
Adam, did you hear, I mean, during his testimony, Mr. Cashman said that he's going to put the compressor in a soundproof room and operate it from there. That's what I heard.
Sorry. Yes, I guess I did hear that. Yes. Reminding there.
I, I own a compressor also, and I hear what you're saying. So it would, if it's going to be taken care of, then it's going to be taken care of.
Yeah, we just see a differentiation as we've, you know, the other home-based businesses that were mentioned, accounting, attorney, things of that nature, you, you don't have equipment that's going to go along with that, that's going to be loud or potentially offensive.
You know, bandsaws can be offensive. So I don't, I don't know.
Well, again, and a bandsaw, I would argue, would not be running for eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night, Monday through Friday, maybe, maybe not. From what it's heard today, this is going to be running nine to five or eight to five on a regular basis. So there's a potential for that compressor to be going the entire period from, I mean, my knowledge of how can, you know, screen printing works, that's a potential. The applicant did say that, that the noise reduction would be something that they would, you know, be taken in consideration by somehow encompassing this compressor within a soundproof medium, which I would, I would say would have to, to get my vote, would have to be 100% taken care of. Because the intention, I think, from a small-based business or a home-based business is to be able to give some relief to those who have that capacity to be able to work from home, but not also interfere with the enjoyment of other people around them and their properties.
Sure. And I, I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to, I, I thought maybe you hadn't heard that. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sorry, just to, I just to interject quickly, that would be a, just sort of, that would be entirely appropriate as a condition of approval.
Okay.
So I would say that for me is a, is a must. I don't know if I would interject that now.
Okay.
How, how would I rephrase this? Yes, with the caveat that, or do I need to put that into a, as we go down, further down the application?
I think as we, as we take a final vote, we can make that a condition.
Okay, so I, I think I'm, I've communicated what I'm feeling. So I would say yes with that caveat.
Okay. I think it's Bob. I haven't been to.
Right. And I'll say yes. And I don't think I have to say much more. And, and Ann, Brian, Adam, all who've spoken well on the topic.
Right. Thank you. On this question, I'll vote yes. I don't, I don't see this reducing any value of property within the district because we have no evidence, nor it would be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to anybody. So I concur. It's five, five yeses, no, 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 no no's. Moving on to question, next question. And again, I'm not sure if I'm reading the right question or I'm coming, I'm going off the application right now.
Split the screen again, Matt, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard of vehicles or pedestrians? Brian?
So I'm going to say, yes, there will be no nuisance, no evidence.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say no evidence to the contrary, so yes.
Okay. Ann?
I'll say yes.
Wow, now mixed up. Who haven't I gotten to? Bob?
I've already voted yes.
You voted, Adam voted. Brian voted and Ann?
I don't know if Brian voted. Brian, did you vote?
I did.
Yes, four people have voted.
Okay. And I will also agree that, that, that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And then lastly, do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Bob?
Yes, with a muffled air compressor.
Okay, Adam?
I would say that the testimony given says that this has been pretty straightforward in what they're trying to accomplish, and they've covered the bases. So yes.
Okay, Ann?
I'll say yes. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes, presuming we have a condition at the end of the day. So given our answers to this question, I would entertain a motion on this, on whether or not we want to grant a special exception for an accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet for the proposed use.
I move that we grant the special exception.
Do we have a second?
This is Ann. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ann. It's been moved and seconded to grant a special exception for this accessory structure with a footprint greater than 1,000 square feet. Any questions on the motion?
I would just ask that we add, within the parameters of this being a yes, that the, the sound of machinery and so forth would be contained to the building and all possible things could be meant to make sure the sound of, of equipment and so forth is not heard by neighbors or be obnoxious or injurious to neighboring properties. So.
Bobby, you good with that addition?
I'm good with that. Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, hearing none? I'll ask Beverly to, to take a vote.
Ann Karsinski?
I vote yes.
Ryan Rutgers? Edel Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
No.
One, two, three, four yeses and one no.
All right.
Motion passes.
All right. I guess we will now move on to the applicant requesting to grant a variance from Section 3, Article U 2F. To permit a home-based business that exceeds 500 square feet in area. Any? We don't need to reopen a public hearing, Matthew, for this second question. I didn't think so. Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay. Any comment, edit, information or other, other, other thing to offer the board before we go to the questions? Seeing none, I just myself would like to point out that this is a de minimis increase of 500 square feet. This is triple the, the ordinance that we have, more than triple, the ordinance that we have. And and I contend whether or not this is a home-based business, whether this is a business based elsewhere, that this structure will support the business, a retail business or a, a much, a business that's, that's in another town. But I think, Matthew?
Keith, sorry, Keith, if I may, I just wanted to, to clarify. So the, the request is for 1,200 square feet for the home-based business. And just to offer to the board, we allow up to 500 square feet. They're asking for 1,200 square feet. If the board felt that there was a number somewhere in the middle that was more appropriate, that could also be, that could be a conditional of approval, just for example, 800 square feet. So if the board is comfortable with a little more, you could grant that without denying it, just to give you an option.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments before we go to the questions here? All right. One, could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Adam? Adam?
I would say, based on, yeah, I would say yes, based on the testimony that I, or the discussion we've had, and on the, on the on basically the other variants or the special exception, as it relates to the structure and what it's going to be used for, and in terms of what it would be in the neighborhood, not, you know, potentially reducing property value and so forth, so I'd say that there's no evidence to the contrary. So yes, to that, to that, that question.
Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brian? You unmuted yourself, Brian, there you go.
There you go. Well, so the special exception and the variance are both based on the same data, the same information, the same request. It's, it's, I'm in the same position, there are pieces of it I disagree with, there are pieces I do agree with, but since our current modus operandi is if you vote no on one thing, you have to vote no for everything, I'm going to say yes, over.
Okay, Anne?
I thought I voted yes.
She did, she already voted.
Okay.
I'll vote yes again.
It only counts once, Anne.
Yeah, so who haven't I hit, who haven't I hit yet, I'm sorry, I'm sort of struggling with this. Who's that?
Just you.
Just me, okay, we've got all four, very, very, so I, I don't see any commensurate or increased if we, if we were to deny this variance, I don't think the public would benefit, the public interest benefits in any, would benefit in any great degree, and greater degree than the applicant, so I agree with the rest of the folks that I believe the variance can be granted without being contrary to the public interest, so it's five. Two. Would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? Anne?
Yes, I think this, the spirit of the ordinance, I, I understand that we have the ordinance as 500 square feet. However, I'm looking at the types of jobs, or the types of home-based businesses that, that there are here, and I can see where some of them would take up more space than others. So, within that spirit, I think we're, yes. Thank you.
Bob?
Well, Keith, you've gotten to me on this one. I've been listening to you and the 500 square feet and the hobby-type businesses, accountants, hairdressers, I, I you know, I, I think this is a bridge too far, so I have to vote no, that the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed.
Thank you. Adam?
Well, again, as it relates to the spirit of ordinance, as we've discussed it, I know we've entertained an idea potentially, at least it was offered by Matthew, for some other number other than 1,200, but I feel personally, I don't know what number I would be more comfortable with, and nor would I be, have any expertise to say 600 is going to do it for you, you know, that's what you're going to get. I think if it's any other number than what's at being asked for, it should be what, you know, what the, the ordinance says, which is 500 square feet. Unless, you know, if you needed just that 550 or 600, so I'm struggling with, with that particular part, because I think the spirit of the ordinance really is to maintain residencies to be what they are. And in one respect, I understand that we've said yes to the special exception for a property, I'm sorry, a, a structure of a certain size, which in my mind, could be a garage, it could be something else, other than a home-based business, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm on the fence for a second, you mind skipping me and coming right back to me, just want to hear what everyone else has to say?
Skipping you and going to jump to Brian, which is the fourth of the four of you.
Well, so again, my opinion doesn't change, I think because of our modus operandi right now, if I say no, I'm forced to vote no across the board, which I disagree with. I am going to say yes, but I am going to give my opinion that a lot of people in Swansea wish they had a 1,500 square foot house. And we're talking about building a 1,500 square foot building in a residential area to run a manufacturing plant. I mean, they're just the way it is. And I think that Matthew did a great job teeing this up, that we could come up with some other, you know, square footage-wise, it could be 600, 800, whatever we, I'm not the applicant, it's not my job to come up with another, you know, to vary the application, that's the applicant's job. So as I said, I'm going to say yes, just because we have to with the way our rules are now, over.
Adam, would you like to go now, or would you like to wait until the till you hear, I guess, what comes to my vote?
Or the chairman, so you get that, that opportunity to be able to go last, okay?
I know, it's not a rule, it's not, it's not a law, we can do anything we want here.
It's one of the, one of the only benefits, I think, of the I'm really struggling with that, that aspect of it, so. I'm going to go ahead, and because again, the way Brian has teed it up with respect to voting no, you got to vote no over everything, because they're all, they're all part of the same question. So for that purpose, I'm going to say yes. But I think I'm struggling with the number, so I guess, I guess I'm going to say yes, it's going to be yes.
Okay. And I will definitely vote no. I don't think this, personally, and I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you let me wait, I don't like, don't want to think that I'm swaying the board, but I see nothing in this request that meets the spirit of this ordinance. It is not what's intended. This is not a home-based business. This is a business that's at their home on the same property. I just don't see any of it. I, I, I I believe this ordinance were, was really clearly stated for things that would have, we, we would, it was, it's be states that this, that the use must be clearly incidental to the use as a residence. And I don't see it. Among, for amount, among other things, so I will vote no. But I think we've all voted, so we'll move on to question three. Would granting the variance do substantial justice? Brian?
I will use your point, counterpoint, because I think it's absolutely germane to this question. Would it do substantial justice? We have no evidence of that, but it would not do a substantial justice to the general public to say no, so I'm going to say yes.
Thank you. Anne?
Um, I'm, I'm going to say yes. We, we can't know, there, there's a lot here that we, that we can't know, why, why they want to have this structure built to support their business. And I think where we are supporting are, you know, I think we're doing justice to the homeowner, the, the property owner. And I don't, I don't think that, you know, we're doing justice to that person, and we're taking in, in context of where the property is located, where, where the other properties are nearby, I think our intent is to make sure that other homeowners and property owners and the use of their property is also being protected, so I'm going to say yes.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, Adam?
Yes.
I'll also vote, yeah, thank you, Adam, I'll vote yes on this, I sort of tied this one into the first one, and relative to the public's interest, and and whether or not substantial justice means that the public hasn't, is not going to be harmed by this, and I don't see the public being harmed by this, so I do believe that this, granting this variance would do substantial justice, so I too am a yes, Beverly.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values? Let's go with Adam.
I would say yes, it could be, you know, there's no, there was no evidence again in the contrary.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes, I, I think the, the intent of, of what we're asking for, which is in particular to add the, you know, to make certain that the, that the, there's no noise, that sort of thing, that we're, I would say yes, we're not going to, we're, the whole focus is to not diminish the, the surrounding property values.
I will also say yes, that we have no evidence in front of us, that would lead us to believe that this particular variance being granted would diminish the surrounding property values. In reality, I'm not sure that that will happen, but we have no evidence in front of us, so I will vote yes at Beverly.
Okay, got it.
Okay, do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Bob?
I have to say no on this, because I argued previously that, you know, it's, it's a relatively rural residential area with large lots, well secluded from the street, I, I can't make the case that it's a unique lot.
Okay. Brian?
Based on the evidence that we have in front of us, the tax map that's there, I would say that it's a fairly good-sized lot, but I think fortunately for this particular applicant, the entire tax map is not there, so we have no evidence in front of me to tell me what the other map sizes are. So I concur with Bob that, you know, up in that particular end of town, there are large lots, but I don't have any evidence to say yes or no, so I'm going to say there's based on what we see, it's, it's a large angled lot, so yes.
You're saying yes, I'm sorry, yes? Brian?
Yeah, based on what we see, the evidence presented to us, yes.
Yeah, he said yes, okay.
All right, Adam?
Well, interesting enough, this is the one question that I struggle with in my head before we even started with this, because beyond everything else, I don't see personally anything distinguishing about this property that makes it a special exception. Or a special difference, or something about the property itself that makes it different or unique. Or any condition about the property. I'm struggling with that, I don't, I just don't see it. In terms of, most of the time when we're defining something like this, we're giving relief, because there is something specific about that property that doesn't allow for this to be somewhere else, you know, or a structure, or some other part for it, so unfortunately, because of that, I, I have to say no, I can't, I don't see anything.
Okay, Anne?
Well, I, I think about, sorry, let me, okay, making sure I'm not muted, I, I think about it, I guess the similar way, but I'm looking at a map of the residence, so when I think of not just that particular area, but, well, that property is, you know, the place where they intend to put this accessory structure, it is in a place where other, other people won't see it, so it's not, it's not like it's going to be in an area where, where it would be, you know, there, there's a lot of places with open land where a structure such as this would be imposing on other people visually, you know, not just from a noise perspective, but where they'd be seeing it. So I guess that's, well, I guess that's not a special condition. I, I guess I'd have to say no. So, sorry.
Okay. I concur, I don't see a, generally a special condition of property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. As we, you know, in the way that we've seen this in a typical variance application, so I too will vote no. Now, Matthew, do we go to A1, or do we pass over that? Because we haven't determined that there are special conditions of the property. It seems to me we have to move on to A2.
I I think that's right, let me just check one thing, sorry.
Sure, no, please.
Yeah, I would, I would read, just Mr. Chairman, that both A or one, two and one need to be together, right, correct, in an affirmative for it to, to move past that second question.
Yeah, I think that, that's right.
Okay. Put that back up on the screen, Matthew.
Yep.
So, let's see, if criteria in A1 and A2. So it seems to me with a negative vote on A, we haven't determined that there are special conditions, so we can't owe anything to that.
So it's
It's not an or argument, it's an and argument, so if one doesn't pass, the other can't even be considered.
Right. So it's Yeah. So then, yeah, because if you come down here, item B, if the criteria and A1 and A2 are not that, then you go to number B.
Right. Right.
But you, yeah.
Well, I think, and I think our, I think our questions are done.
I think they are.
I think we're ready to entertain a motion on the variance application permitting a home-based business exceeding 500 square feet in area.
Well, I'll, I'll make a stab at it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please do.
I would say that I would like to make a motion to the variance to section three, article U2F, the zoning ordinance being denied as a result of not meeting the criteria of the questions for variance in its entirety.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to deny a variance from section two, article, excuse me, section three, article U2F of the zoning ordinance, so we have any questions on the motion? No, seeing, hearing none, I'll ask Beverly to call our roll.
Anne Karizinski?
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't quite, I
We have, we have made, a motion's been made, Anne, to deny the variance. Do you vote yes to deny the variance, or no, that you do not agree that we should deny the variance?
I, I do not agree that we should deny the variance.
Thank you.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Edom Hahn?
So I'm, I'm affirming, I'm affirming my own, so yes, I'm affirming my own my own motion.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
All right. We go to the third, third piece here, because the, and I want to make sure I understand this, Matthew, should the variance not be granted, which is what we've just happened, the applicant requests a variance from section four, article B1, to permit a screen printing business to be conducted on the premises. Now, in 4B1 is, use is permitted in the residence district.
Right.
And home occupations and home-based businesses are allowed.
Well, and Keith, so to your point earlier, yeah, I think the board determined that what's proposed is kind of beyond the scope of a, a home-based business, so this is requesting to run it as a business versus a home-based business with the extra square footage. That being said, um, you know, the, the applicant is, is still on the call, the cashman's are still on the call. Um, you know, I think the board, the board could take up this variance request. Um, I, I guess I would leave it up to the applicants. Um, they could also withdraw that request at this point based on the board's vote on the home-based business variance.
Uh, this is Brian. Uh, I've got a question. I think I'm lost without you were saying, Matthew. So I think we've, we've passed the special exception allowing for a 1,500 square foot building to be built, right?
That way, yes.
And we denied the variance to run a home-based business greater than 500 square feet. And now we're being asked to take up instead of a home-based business, just a business,
Okay.
residential district.
Yep.
Our restrictions on square footage, it's just, do we approve the, this use in that district? Is that correct?
That's, that is correct.
Okay.
So at this point, just so the cashman's understand, they've received the special exception approval for the structure itself. And they could apply for a home-based business with the planning board up to 500 square feet. And that would just go to the planning board. Cause their variance request was for the additional square footage for the home-based business.
Right, so they could stop here and just present the special exception for the building and the, and stay with the 500 square foot home-based business, which they don't need our permission for, because it's already in the ordinance. Or they can continue with us and get a permission for the use of the business in a residential district, but not a home base. So then it's just a matter of us approving the business where there's no square footage restriction.
He, yes, but the board could still put a limit on the allowed square footage.
Right, okay.
I, I gotta, I thought, I'm, I'm completely confused because I thought personally that I had voted for the, this is my own perspective.
Right.
Uh, and I think the board's perspective as well, that we, we voted, and I'm particularly for special exception to be made for additional accessory structure. And that variance to increase that square footage beyond the 500 feet is denied. So I look at it as a structure of 1,500 feet with a business of no more than 500 feet has been thumbed up. So I don't understand why this third potential variance would be required for us to continue. Are we, are we voting that screen printing is a business allowed in the district of Sw- of, uh,
Home-based business. So if we, if we leave it as a home-based business, they're restricted to 500 square feet unless we offer variance, which we turn down. So now they're coming to us not as a home-based business, but just as a business in a residential district. And in our ordinance, there was no restriction on size. So we've already given them the building at 1,586 or whatever it was. Now they're just saying, okay, can I just operate a business in the residential district? And if we say yes, then they've gone around the home-based business requirement.
And if we say no?
Then they can take the application with the special exception to the zoning board and stick with the 500 square feet because they don't have the authority to override the just restricted to 500 square feet.
You know, I, I, I think this will be pro forma if we go through it because this would seem to be a higher bar than what we just did.
Yes.
Is anyone seeing it that way?
I do.
Uh, and I think maybe we're obligated to go through the process.
I don't think we are. I think that Matthew raised a point that we are allowed to reopen and ask the cashman's if they wish to withdraw this so that don't have this, they don't have a second denial or it may not be, I mean, it's up to them. But they would be restricted to 500 square feet at the planning board, right?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, just given the hour and we have two other applications on the agenda. I just wanted to offer that up. I mean, if, if the cashman's want to proceed, that's certainly their right. Um, but based on the discussion we just had.
Well, is the, anyone, you, do we, do we want to reopen the public hearing? Anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just because I'm unsettled, I guess, still with the point of the third variance, I would suggest, and people could support or not in the board to open up the public meeting or open this up to the public once again. So that the cashman's or the applicant has the opportunity to discuss if they would like to go forward or not with this particular variance.
Second that, Brian.
It's been moved, I adam seconded by Brian to reopen the public hearing to get information or to have a discussion with the, with the cashman's and anyone else that wants to, when the public wants to. Any questions on the motion? Beverly?
Anne Karazinski?
Uh, yes, reopen. Let's find out what, what we're doing.
Brian Rutgers? Adam Alhern?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Passes all were in favor.
Okay, so we'll reopen the public hearing to listen for the cashman's. Um, I'm sure we've totally confused them. So I'm sort of feeling a little confused myself, but, um, I think if I can tee this up correctly, the variance is now gone. The variance is being requested now is simply to permit a screen printing business to be conducted on the premises of which a variance is needed because screen printing is not allowed, this sort of a business is not allowed in the residence district. Is that is, I guess the question is to the cashman's, is this is something that you would like us to take up? Or would you prefer not to? Not, not, that's not to take up this request for variance.
Mr. Chairman, am I on?
Yeah, you are now on.
Okay, well, first off, I want to thank you guys for your time and, uh, you guys got a tough job doing it in the Zoom. That's even crazier.
Can be.
The purpose of behind the, the, the two requests, we understood with the home-based, uh, application of the variance that we exceeded the square foot limit, uh, within the, the scope of, of the home, home-based business. Uh, and, and that's why we applied secondly for the, the variance to have a business, uh, a, a, a business in a residential district. I will say, um, if, and, and I, and I've listened to everyone, and again, it was very confusing, but, um, you know, if the, if the denied variance on the first one was based off of that, it didn't fit the, the guidelines of the, the home base of 500 square feet. And, and I understand, and I, I hear there all the, all everyone's, uh, you know, statements on that. Then, yes, we would like to proceed with, with the, the, the variance to have the business, but if, if, if it was more about because of the location, I mean, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, that, that first variance that we applied for the second one is still the same criteria that you're going to look at and examine. And I fully understand that. You know, our purpose, our hope was because there's other large, larger businesses, horse farms, Pappas, uh, you know, Johnson Letter, you know, they have larger, uh, facilities with, with a home-based business. We thought, uh, as a home business, I'm sorry, a business on the home and the residential district. We, we thought that that would be the direction that we would go anyways. Um, now obviously you guys are busy and I don't want to, you know, wa- weigh, weigh down all your time, but that was my purpose behind applying for a business in the residential district.
I think I'm hearing that he would like us to take up this variance request. Others believe this Matthews shaking, nodding his head.
That's my understanding.
All right. Okay, um, before we go to the questions, does anyone on the board have any comments? Or other information to share? I guess what we're asking now is a variance, just a strict, straight-up variance from section four, article B1, same questions we're going to take up as we took up for just previously to permit a screen printing business in a residential district.
Keith, do you want to close the public?
Oh, thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. Appreciate that, Bob.
I, I will make one comment denying, if I, if I could, or not comment, but question of the board. With denying this, so I understand it completely, denying this use, would that obviate? What we just did with the other two questions, meaning that they have the ability to create a, an accessory dwelling. They have to keep it within the 500 feet set limit of for this home-based operation to run a screen printing business. But if we say no as a board, that they cannot do a screen printing business within this premises.
You misunderstand.
Okay. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's not the way I understand it at all. Uh, actually, this one here is a completely standalone and has nothing to do with 500 square feet home-based business. This is just are we going to permit the use of a screen printing business in a residential district? And there's no restrictions on square footage at all.
So I guess my question will last then, and I will stop from there because I'd like to continue with this, but, uh, if we say no as a board, they can't run a screen printing business at that location and that, and that property, correct?
I believe they can run a 500 square foot one.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would need to go to the planning board and meet all the other criteria for a home-based business.
Very good. I, I'm under this, I'm on, I'm on the same page as everybody else. Thank you.
So, so we're now gonna vote whether screen printing is an acceptable business? Is that, is that what we're doing?
Here's this, appears as such. And we will take up the same questions though that we used, that we did for the, the last variance that we would, that we denied. Go to the questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Matthew, I just want to make sure that we understand this correctly. So this variance is purely a monocle vision in that do we agree that they can do a screen printing business in a residential district? That's it.
That's correct, yep.
But, well, well, what's the difference between screen printing and sign painting? You're just painting on metal or wood or what are, whatever the substrate is versus, versus a sweatshirt? What, what's the difference? Cause right down the road, they have a, there's a sign painting business.
That may have been grandfathered before zoning was put into place and I don't know.
Okay.
Sort of an apples and oranges situation. It's we, we have what we have in front of us on this particular business. We kind of know how it, how it operates. Uh, what they're looking to do.
Yeah, and I would just say what you're, what you're approving is what has been presented by the applicant. So you're, you're approving that site plan, you're approving the use of that structure for 1,200 square feet. Um, if it's approved as a business, they would need to do a a site plan review application with the planning board. It's a different process, but still going to the planning board. You're not, you're not saying yes, any screen printing business, 30,000 square feet is fine. You're approving just what's in front of you. If you approve it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, one, one additional one. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, Matthew, you've referenced 1,200 a couple of different times now. I understand that they had a different, you know, 1,200 for this use and 300 for another use, but at the end of the day, if we permit that structure on that plan that's in front of us, they could, they have access to the entire 1,500 and 30 some six. Is that right?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, um, you know, I think the planning board, or excuse me, uh, the the zoning board could set a limit on the, on the square footage. Um, you know, the, when it goes to the planning board, the planning board approves a certain square footage for a business, um, for any business. And if someone's changing that, they would have to go back to the planning board.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to the questions. Could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Bob?
Thank you. I've been thinking about this and it, it, it seems that we're really opening a can of worms here because the request, uh, as I see it is for light, industrial light manufacturing in a residential district, which is certainly not an enumerated use and is certainly not a home occupation. So, uh, and, and, and even although I like the five acre setting, I like the, the tree buffer and all that sort of thing. I, I think this is a slippery slope, so I, I have got to say, that it cannot be granted without being contrary to the public interest. The zoning ordinances are in the public interest and this just, uh, opens them up. I, I have to say no.
Okay. Anne?
Well, I, um, I feel that the variance could be granted uh, without being contrary to the public interest, uh, because we have fail safes in place to, to do so. Both with the limiting in the size of the structure or, you know, as it, if it were to proceed on to, you know, to the planning board, so.
Okay. Brian?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Adam?
I don't necessarily believe that the public benefits using your structure of that question by denying this. So from that point of view, yes.
And I'm going to on this one personally vote. Given what we, how we voted before, I guess, I guess this particular, than this question, I will, I will vote yes. Would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? Adam?
Going along with my previous thoughts as it relates to the type of business, I think we discussed it and what they're trying to accomplish on the property and what they're trying to do. I think that the spirit of the ordinance is trying to grant some relief for people to be able to work from home and to create livelihoods with the properties that they own within reason. And so from that point of view, I think the spirit of the ordinance is being observed, yes.
Brian?
I think, uh, the answer for me is yes. Uh, I think the ordinance is a guideline with a set of like criterion. And if you step outside of that, come to the board and ask permission. They've done that. So I think the spirit is being met.
Anne?
I say yes, as, as I view it, um, you know, in, in a changing, um, a changing way of, uh, of all of us to make a living, that this is an opportunity to, um, not, not run their entire business, but to supplement the, the business activities, special projects, whatever, you know, what, what have you. Um, gives the opportunity for, um, the people who own the property, who work for the business and that's their principal uh, means for their livelihood. I, I believe that, um, that, that yes, um, if it were granted, it's the, it, it would be, um, in supporting the spirit of the ordinance for
Okay.
Property ownership.
Sorry.
Uh, no, uh, I don't think light industrial is even close to the enumerated uses of, uh, in a residential district.
Thank you, and I agree with Bob. I do not think the spirit of the ordinance is observed. If you go throughout what's uses that are allowed in the residence district, the closest they get to is a home occupation and we already, we've already gone down that road. So, and even with, um, Even with a special exception. It's talking about multifamily dwellings, two families, daycare facilities. And that kind of a thing. So I, I vote no. Would granting the variance do substantial justice? Brian?
To whom? The applicant, yes. The general public? No idea.
Your answer is no? Or did you?
Well, I mean, that's what I. You was, you know, substantial justice to whom? If it's to the applicant, which is what I believe this question is driving towards, then yes, it would do substantial justice to them.
Okay, Anne?
Uh, I, I believe that it would do substantial justice for the, the applicant. It isn't light manufacturing. They're, they're just, everything they have has already been manufactured. They're just. Gussing it up a bit with some sparkle.
Thank you.
Sparkle.
Bling.
Did you call him?
Yes, Bob.
Okay. I was listening to the last comment. The. Yeah, yes.
Okay, Adam?
I would say yes, substantial justice to the applicant and does not do substantial injustice to the public at large.
Okay, I will concur and vote yes on this one. I do, I do consider one and three to be a similar event. Could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values? Anne?
Yes, absolutely. We protect the, protect the property values.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes, no contrary evidence.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes under the same, for the same reason, we have no evidence that it would in front of us. Uh, five, do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Bob?
Same answers before, no.
Okay. Adam?
I agree, same answer, no.
Brian?
No.
Anne?
So while I'll, I'll say no, I, I want to clarify that. It, in my mind, given that the, it is not only a rural area, but you know, more than five acres. So it's in a spot where. It makes it a special condition, at least in my mind, where. Is less obtrusive to the neighbors. So while I have to say no. That's, I'm torn there, so.
I hear what you're saying. I understand. And I'll also vote no. Which. We determined last time gets us to the end of the. Deliberations or the, and the end of the voting on this. Given what we've been through, we entertain a motion on this request.
I'll make another motion, Adam Mulhern here, to deny the variance application request based upon the fact again. That the criteria questions were not met.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Adam and seconded by Bob to deny this variance request. Any questions on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to Beverly.
Okay, Anne Karazinski.
We're voting to deny the variance. A yes vote is to deny the variance and no vote is to. To not, not deny the variance.
I'll, I'll vote no.
Okay.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Edelma Hearn?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Kibo?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
All right. We will move on to the next application. It's a variance application. Number twenty dash zero one one. Robert Stryker and Christine Elliott request to grant a variance from section four. Article B three of the zoning ordinance. To construct a garage, to construct a garage that would be located in the front yard setback. Of the property at 62 Christian Hill Road. Subject property is shown a tax map. Fifty eight, Lloyd 26, lot 26, and is located in the residence district. In this one, we will. We'll seat. Eric for. Bill Hutwaker.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, would you please repeat the? I'm a little behind you. Would you please, please repeat this? This is variance number twenty dash one zero? Is that correct?
Zero one one.
Oh. Keith, I think we. We skipped over.
Yes.
Two oh nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I. Oh. It's, thank you. We will strike what I said and we will take up. ZBA application in the correct order, and this is twenty dash zero one zero, again, a variance application. Edward Grant, request to grant a variance from section five, article B three. Of the zoning ordinance to construct a garage that would be located in the side yard setback of the property at. Two oh nine Old Homestead Highway. The subject property showing at tax map thirty six lot nine, located in the business district. My apologies. Thank you, Beverly.
You're welcome.
And we will ask. Matthew to give us a little. Background.
Quick question, Mr. Chairperson. Mr. Chair, I just want to confirm that I'm going to be seated for this application.
Eric, and we'll seat Eric for Bob, for Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. So in this application, the applicant Ed Grant is requesting to. To take down an existing structure on his property. And I have the site plan in front of you. On the screen, it's a little difficult to make out, but there's a, there's an existing structure. Along the southern side of the property. He has here. He has indicated this is the existing. You know, print, it's this long near narrow structure. Currently, it's setback at its closest point, eleven feet from the property line. And then it's furthest point, point seventeen feet from the property line. And the minimum side yard setback is 20 feet. So that existing structure is, it's a nonconforming structure. It's, it's in not great shape, that structure. He's looking to, to take it down and construct a new garage. Uh, which is shown by the dash line here. Which would measure 24 feet in width by twenty eight, twenty eight feet in depth. Um, as you can see, it would really be in the same location. Keeping that 11 foot setback at the closest point and going back to that 17 foot setback. It would be expanding towards the north away from that southern property line. Um, so he's looking to maintain that. Nonconforming setback, but not getting any closer to that property line. At, you know, at this time, I. At this time, I don't, I don't see Mr. Grant on the call. I know Mike, Mike Jasmine. It looks like is still with us. I know Mike had some comments just on the. The condition of the existing structure that's up there. I did, just so the board knows, I did speak to Mr. Grant. Just about the Zoom meeting and gave him the information for. For accessing the Zoom meeting. He didn't have a lot of experience with Zoom. So that might explain why he's not with us. This evening. Yep.
Do, there's nothing, nothing in our ordinance that says they have to be here?
No.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing from Mike, though.
Let me promote him to a.
Yeah, promote my.
Analyst and I'll give him a minute because it's. He's, he's stuck with us for the first two hours. Mike, if you're, if you're there, I'm not sure if you've been, been following along, but we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to, to get. To get organized and collected. And I'm happy to answer any questions. While we give Mike a minute, if the board has any, any questions.
I have a, I have a question. I mean, with regards to the applicant. I mean, obviously I'd be interested to hear from Mike as well, but without the applicant. It's going to be challenging to navigate this. Just because, I mean, I'm going to have some questions and. You know, I'm just wondering at this point, before we get too deep, if there's a board, we should decide. To. Continue with, to move forward, to not move forward. I mean, usually the applicant is part of the proceedings. I mean, I'm not sure the applicant's at, but. Make any, you know, decisions on this without the applicant, I think is, is going to be challenging, so. I think we should be careful. You know, how, how we proceed with this.
All right. Would you like us to maybe pull the board? Eric, to see how other folks feel?
I would, yes, just because, I mean, you know, sitting at the other side of the table and. You know, in my industry, it just. I know typically, you know, subboards would. If the applicant wasn't there unless they requested to continue, would. You know, motion to either deny it or. Or, or maybe the board would, you know, if there was good reason. Make a motion to continue with the, you know, because I know we're in a Zoom environment and not everybody's used to that, so we wouldn't want to be unfair to the applicant, but. I just. You know, and I know we got one other application here too, so I, I think we just need to be. Smart about it. But yeah, I would be interested to hear from other board members, Mr. Chair.
I'll, this is Ian, I'll, I'll jump in. We recently had an application. I think in our. I forget. Meeting before last, we had some people that had a dilapidated. Structure on their property, which they wanted to replace. So I, I think we're kind of looking at the same situation. With the exception that this is an existing structure and I. I actually live around the corner from where that is located, so I'm pretty familiar and can speak to the dilapidated. That the barn that, that he's talking about, you can see where it's almost fallen over, so. Certainly, if, if, if Mike's able to speak to us to, to that respect, I think he. Not to put words in his mouth, but he'd probably say the same thing. So where I'm looking at that structure where he's, he's. Looking to make it in the same, within the same footprint. And then go over to the, in the left of the property, so it's not, you know, he's not changing. The, the current. You know, when you're looking down the left, the left hand side of that property, I, I think we could discuss it reasonably without the applicant being here unless. Eric, I'd, I'd be interested to know what questions that you'd have for him. It looks like he wants to replace a, a structure that's, that's probably not safe.
Yeah, I mean, it looks reasonable for sure. I mean, I guess my only concern would be if, and I'm not saying this would happen, but if it did, that we got to a point where. We needed to impose conditions. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable. Imposing those conditions on an applicant that. Either may or may not be able to.
Sure.
Honor those, and then he'd have to come back and appeal those. So I'm, you know, that would, that would be my take on that.
Adam?
I just, I'll point out something that we just recently had available to us is a webinar that kind of spoke about some of the. Minimum requirements as it related to the emergency order, number 12. And in going through the, some of the. Materials that have been disseminated. Uh, one of the things is adjourning the particular meeting, the public is unable to access the meeting in some fashion. So along the lines of what Eric is stating. Matthew, do you feel, or do we feel as a board? That this applicant wasn't able to meet with this because of some. Inability to, I have a feeling, I guess what I'm saying in the opposite form, if this was an in-person meeting down at, at Wickham Hall, would this, this applicant be there? Is there something that's preventing this applicant from being able to discuss? The application being, most being presented?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good question. You know, to the best of my knowledge, I, I haven't received any phone calls or emails or, or any communication from the applicant. Saying that they haven't been able to log on. This evening. You know, one thing I'll. Say to the board too is, as a, you know, as a. Quasi judicial board. You know, the applicant has a right to, to present and defend their application. You know, if in the scenario of the board. Found that, you know. There was reasons to deny the application and the applicant didn't have an opportunity. To address the board's concerns, I think that would be. That would be an issue, so. Probably the, probably the safest thing to do is to, to continue it. Unfortunately, I just, I, I don't know why Mr. Grant. Was not able to join us this evening. And I don't want to. Assume. Why he can't be here right now.
And I think. I may have an alternative perspective on this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure, Mike, Bob.
You know, it, it seems to be that applicant has an obligation. Or the onus is on themselves to be present for a presentation and. By telephone, by web, whatever. But the other point is. If we start this now and we find we have questions for the applicant. That only the applicant can answer. Then I think we can continue it, can't we? Can't we make the decision to continue it to another date or?
Yeah.
Would the applicant have to ask for that?
I think it's, personally, I think it's within our purview to, to kick it down, to kick it out to the next, to the next meeting and. Might be interesting to hear what Brian has to say, though.
Well, before, before Brian speaks, I just want to toss something else out there and it, it's been mentioned in previous meetings. You know, here we are getting into. Into fall tomorrow. So it, and I understand that the applicant isn't here, but having looked through the application and, and seen. That, you know, maybe he didn't bother because he didn't think it would be necessary because he's replacing a, an existing. Structure that's dilapidated, so he's actually improving his. You know, not only his own property, but the, you know, the eyesore that that is, so. I would like to at least give it an opportunity to discuss and, and, and go through our questions and see if we can make. Happen? Hello? Chair, I, I think, I think we should.
Yeah, I'm also pretty familiar with the property and, and I don't think it's our job to. Question why he's not here, where he's going to be, if he's, maybe he just didn't think it was that big of a deal, but it's frankly, it's none of our business. He presented an application, we can hear the application. If we get stuck on a point where we need his input, then we can table it and. And push it to the next month. Being familiar with the property, it's not really, it's going to be a moot point. Good winter wind, that thing's coming down, so it's either going to come down. Taking it down a controlled way, or it's going to come down against his house, but either way, it's going to come down, so. It doesn't matter what we say.
All right. Mike still asleep?
Yeah, that ship sailed.
Hey, I, yeah, I, I haven't heard back from Mike. I just. Sent him a text message, so I think.
All right, so I've heard both sides here. I'm going to make a decision. That using Brian's. Logic that we move forward with this. If we get a real sticking point somewhere down the line. We've seen applications like this before. This is not wholly unique. That if we got a sticking point that comes up and we feel we need to, 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 to. Continue it to the next meeting, that we can do so. So. Unless someone wants to die on that sword, I'll, I'm going to move forward. I am also familiar with the structure.
And I, Mike Jasmine is here now.
Hey, put down the beer, Mike.
So, Mike, you got, you got 60 seconds.
It's like a selectmen's meeting. Nice to see everybody today. I'm sorry, I hadn't recognized that I was unmuted. No, I've been here the whole time.
Ian, I thought you were asleep.
No, no, not at all. Not at all. My apologies.
Well, it's been.
I'm glad that most everybody's familiar with the structure. I'll keep it very brief. I'm glad that most everybody's familiar with the structure. For those that aren't, it's as you're looking at the penny building, the big red barn. Um, if you look to the house to the right, there's a, there's at the end of the driveway to that home on the right, there is this barn. I, 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 I do 100% agree. Um, unfortunately, that it's, it's, it's. In, in just a condition beyond repair, I, I do take umbrage that it's ugly. I think it's one of the most beautiful buildings we have. I love that little building. It's going to break my heart to see it go. The other thing is, is that would remind everybody. That, 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 that it is a two-story structure. So effectively what Mr. Grant's doing is he's cutting it in half and then dropping it all on one level. And that's, and that's basically. Um, and that's, and that's basically it. It is bad. It does need to go. It is beyond repair. Uh, when you take the overall total square footage, I don't actually know what that is. I don't know that it's, what he's asking for is bigger. Um, but he's basically taking the, the stories and shooting it along one, uh, simple floor level. Thank you.
All right. Any questions of Mike? Any questions of Matthew or Mike from the board members?
My only question, this is Brian, is that it's going to be the same encroachment into the setback and the expansion will be into the conforming property side. So it's just a matter of us allowing it to be expanded and to remain at the same square footage. I mean, footage closeness to the setbacks. Is that right?
Uh, that is correct. And actually, you know, under our zoning ordinance, if he was not taking down that building completely and building a new building and that existing non-conforming building was in better shape, he could do this expansion without a variance. It's just the fact that he has to take it down and build a new one that he needs a variance.
But he, the, the, there'll be no further encroachment into the setback at any point along that, that line.
That's correct.
And I think mother directly forced his decision, right?
Mother nature.
Yeah. I, I think it's important in that, and again, we're quibbling on your feet here like we usually end up doing, but there's, there may be a, when the builder gets, uh, your demo's done, builder gets down there and they may think about squaring that thing off at 11 feet at both ends from that property line. I guess we'll leave it to Mike and you, Matthew, to make sure that we don't, we don't get to that scenario and sort of defeat the purpose of what we're doing here. If the applicant were here, we would be talking to him about, I would be talking to him about that.
I take, am I, am I on?
Yeah, you're on, Mike.
Yeah. Uh, for what it's worth on these structures, I take site dimensions before the demolition. And then I confirm those site dimensions upon reconstruction.
Okay, good. All right. Anything else here before we, any other questions of any Mike or Matthew or each other before we move on to the questions?
No.
Just, oh, I would open up this discussion just because it's a sticking point every time we have a variance application, not unique necessarily to, you know, any one application, but the property itself granting some special circumstance. And I'm leaning myself mentally towards the fact that it has a dangerous structure within that, or, or, or on the property that lends itself some level of, uh, uniqueness to the area.
I concur.
More comment on that?
I see this, I see that. I concur that that is a special condition of this property that distinguishes it from other properties in the district. Is a unsafe according, and, and according to Mike, un, un, un-reparable building beyond repair. So we don't want to presuppose that, but I think that going to that, when we get to that question, that would be my expectation that this is what distinguishes it from other properties in the district. Okay? All right. Let's go. Could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Adam?
It sounds like the public interest would be benefited, um, by granting this variant.
Okay, the answer would be yes then?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I agree, yes. Would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? Anne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
I agree. There's no further encroachment is the reason. We're keeping it to the same, same as it is now. Would granting the variance do substantial justice? Eric?
Yes, it's going to be an improvement on the property structurally and for safety purposes.
Brian?
Yes.
Adam?
I will concur with Eric. Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Ian, yes, and I concur. Um, could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values? Brian?
Uh, he Yes.
Yes. Adam?
Yes, it sounds like it would have a positive effect.
Likely. Anne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I will concur. Do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Adam?
I would say yes. And again, citing, um, what I discussed earlier is that the fact that this property has a structure in this condition lends itself to a special condition in its entirety as a property or as a, as a, as a, as a lot that make it unique and distinguish it from other properties in the area.
Okay. Anne?
Yes, and I think Mike Jasmine might want to go and take some more pictures of it so that he has them for his scrapbook.
Eric?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah, there's only, uh, there's only six structures in that little stretch there. Four of them are businesses. So, uh, this happens to be one of only two residences in that area, uh, and it's actually sandwiched between two businesses.
Yeah.
One across the street, uh, and it's a narrow property. The house is angled to it and, uh, it's the only one in the area with a uh, structure that could actually be injurious to people over.
Okay, I'll concur, yes. Owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other property in the area. Do we agree that there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the, to the property? Again, we're replacing a structure uh, that is already within setback, not extending anymore into that setback. Anne?
Yes.
Eric? I'm sorry.
Yes, agreed.
Brian?
Yes, hate this question, but yes.
Bad question.
Adam?
Yes, I'm agreeing now. So yes.
Yes, okay. All right. We have A1 and A2 and Anne, is the proposed use a reasonable one? Adam?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I will concur. So we've, um, A1 and A2 are met. We can, um, entertain a motion at this time.
Uh, this is Ian, I'll make a motion that we approve the exception.
Okay. Ian, have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion Mitchell's not seated for this one.
Well, Brian, a motion by Ian and executed by Brian to grant the variance. Beverly?
Anne Karizinski?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Pete Tivo?
Yes.
The motion passes. All were in favor.
All right. Let's move on to our last application of the evening, which is already, I've already read, but I'll read it again, 20 dash 011. Robert Stryker and Christine Elliott request to grant a variance from section four, article B3 of the zoning ordinance to construct a garage that would be located in the front yard setback of the property at 62 Christian Hill Road. The subject property is shown at tax map 58 lot 26 located in the residence district. We'll bring Bob back off the bench to sit for Bill Hutweller. And, uh, we'll ask Matt to tee this up a little bit here. I've seen the pictures of this property. It's an interesting, beautiful property.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Keith. Um, so I have the, the site plan on the screen in front of you, just showing what, uh, the applicants are proposing to, to do there on the property. Um, so you can see the, the existing house here. Um, this structure, uh, just to the, the east of the house. Uh, this is actually an existing, uh, accessory dwelling unit that was recently approved a few years ago. Before that, um, as you can see, it, it was a garage. So, uh, the property did use to have a garage that was converted by a previous owner to a, um, accessory dwelling unit. Um, the applicant is now looking to put up a new garage to replace that, that old garage. Um, the proposed garage structure is shown, uh, down here on the lower part of the screen. It's a 24 by 28 foot two-car garage. Um, the proposal is to have it setback, uh, 12 feet from the front property line along Christian Hill Road. Uh, the property is in the residence district and a 30-foot, uh, front yard setback is required. Um, you can see just on the side of the screen, this is the side property line, uh, and it would be 24 feet meeting that 20-foot setback requirement from the side property line. Um, so it is just that, that 12-foot, uh, um, variance that is needed. Um, it's a little difficult to read, but directly adjacent to where the garage is proposed, there's an existing well there, um, which is a constraint for trying to locate, uh, that garage. Um, we haven't received any comments from the public, um, after sending out the, the public hearing notice and, um, I haven't received any comments from department heads on this application. So, um, I do have, um, Mr. Stryker, um, on the call. So I'm going to promote Mr. Stryker to a panelist and thank him for sticking with us. Um, and, um, so Robert, you may need to unmute yourself.
Might also be sleeping.
No, I'm here, folks.
Welcome.
So the, the driveway we're proposing here, uh, as you, you, you folks probably know the this is a, is a reverse salt box. So we are proposing to follow that same theme of putting a salt box garage. We provided you guys a, a, you know, a similar, you know, layout and, and proposed garage there with windows on the roadside. Um, also adjacent to the garage on the detailed site plan is a stone wall that will be rebuilt. Uh, we need some tree stumps that are going to be removed out of there, but we, our intentions are to rebuild that stone wall. So there is a barrier from the road. Um, and we're also leaving the tree line on the adjacent property.
Oh, I, I see. So your entrance is actually facing the driveway. Now I get it now.
Yeah.
Right off the road into that garage.
No, sir. No, sir. So you would see the shorter part of it, the 24-foot versus the 28-foot.
Questions of the board? Anyone?
Um,
Right in?
Oh, sorry. Uh, what, what is immediately across the street? I mean, are, is there enough butter?
That is a 50-acre field owned by, uh, Cynthia Brown, which, and, and behind us, uh, directly across from us, uh, across in the road is that 50-acre field right there.
Okay.
So we, there's nobody in front of us and behind us, the land is in, uh, forest management as well. And the adjoining property to the, to, to the right of us is only a one-acre lot. That property right there. And we have left that tree line. As you could see, our property angles, but the house is squared to the road. So we're very limited to where to put a garage.
I see that. And you're saying it was the previous owner who put in the accessory dwelling that was the former garage?
Yes, that was, uh, the old fire chief, um, uh, Skanks, uh, Skanks. Yes, it was his property that we purchased and, uh, that garage was turned into a detached dwelling unit. We do not have any intentions of renting that unit, uh, with the amount of grandkids we have between us. That's just for family and friends when they come up.
Gotcha. Thank you.
What is, um, I see, I see when Matthew has the, um, has it up so we, we can see that the, had seen the well that is right behind. Well,
If you go to one of the pictures where there's a vehicle parked there, you could see that cone, which is just adjacent to the, uh, guest dwelling right there. You could see that cone and cement circle right there. That is the well.
Okay.
So to carry, I think that, eh, to, to carry the garage would put it, eh, to get the setback of 30 feet would put it right on top of that well and actually on the side of the, uh, the, uh, detached dwelling unit, which was the existing garage that was converted prior to our purchase.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question for the applicant. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at the Google map street view, which is ancient because it, it shows the former garage not converted to an accessory dwelling unit. But it shows a tree right on, uh, right on the street line. Is that tree still there?
No, sir. That tree, there was actually a cluster of three trees that, that were, uh, heavily rotted and have removed them just for safety factors. So the large tree,
Yes.
you see that stump right there.
Yes.
Part of rebuilding that wall is, uh, the site plan work is to remove all those rocks. So the tree service come in and grind those stumps down because if he was to remove those stumps, we would have to be repaving Crystal Hill. So grind those down and then we're, our intentions are to rebuild that wall there. Uh, but we want to get rid of the stump. So there's no site in block or looking at the road or down the road.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? How, how large is this site?
Uh, 2.5 acres.
Okay.
This is on the very front of it. So it's 550 deep, 550 feet deep by 210 feet wide. So it's high slice. So it very limits our options.
Other questions?
Just I have a question. Um, is the, um, well, that's to the right there of that DDU parking there. Is that going to be upgraded or disturbed in any way? I mean, I guess
No, sir. No, sir. That's a drill well, um, and we're far enough away. We're about eight feet away from it. And that is our service well. Um, there is an existing well, but it's non-potable in the center between the two dwellings.
Nah. Where, where was your, where was your septic system?
It's behind the existing. Uh, there's a mark there for the leak and everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is a public hearing. I don't know if there's anybody else on the call here that might be construed as a member of the public other than Mike.
Uh, at this time, we don't have anyone else.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions of the board before we move on? Seeing none, hearing none? We'll close the public hearing. Um, any deliberations before we move on to the questions by anyone? Anyone want anything to add?
Well, I, I make an observation that setbacks are about aesthetics and safety. And, uh, with the stone wall already there, with the stone wall and tree stumps there, I, I think the safety issue is moot. And, and then we have aesthetics to deal with.
Matthew, do you have the tax map sort of showing this in relation to the rest of the properties?
Yeah, let me, let's see. I scrolled past it. Here we go. Let me. So it's this lot 26 here.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. I, I would just note too, uh, I, I know Mr. Stryker noted this in the application. And as the board is aware, the, the property is, uh, within that historic district of, um, of the village of West Swansea and, and driving around that area, you know, we have a 30-foot front yard setback. Um, there are a number of examples of structures that are, that are closer than 30 feet, I would say, um, to the front setback line, um, just given the historic development patterns in this area. the historic development patterns in this area.
What what's the age of this particular home?
Let's see if we have that.
Mr. Stryker may know.
It is, I think it's dated to early 1950s, if not late 1940s.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is Brian. So once again, it's a neighborhood I'm pretty familiar with and pretty familiar with Christian Hill. I think Matthew is right. A lot of the houses on Christian Hill that are downhill where he's where where Mr. Stryker is are closer than 30 feet to the road.
Yes, our our joining property, I think his house is about four feet off the road.
And the thing I like about that particular part of Christian Hill is behind him is protected. It's like 11 or 12 acres of land that's really kind of landlocked. And across the street is 49 or 50 acres that is just it's locked.
Cynthia Brown will never sell it.
That's exactly right, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else, any other questions? Before we move to the questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. We'll move on. Could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Start with Adam.
Yes.
Anne? You're muted, Anne.
Yes.
Thank you. Brian? Bob?
Yes, safety and aesthetics, and I think they're both covered.
Okay. And again, there'd be no corresponding addition. The public would not benefit in a greater way than the applicant would benefit should we deny. So I vote yes. Would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? Anne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say yes. And I would, you know, even add that trying to keep the garage and the home all kind of having the same feel, look, and the spirit of, you know, the property itself where it's located, thoroughly speaking and otherwise, that those considerations are being met, which follow the spirit of the ordinance. So yes.
I agree. Would the granting the variance do substantial justice? Brian?
To the owner, yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I concur. Could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values? Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say yes, again, no evidence to the contrary.
Correct. Anne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I concur. I we have no, we have no evidence showing that the variance would that granting of the variance would diminish surrounding property values. Do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Adam?
I would say yes. And then overall, just the 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 shape of the property and how most of the, we'll call it the acreage of that lot is behind the home, which would be pretty much inaccessible via a septic system, basically driving over your septic system or your well. So in terms of uniqueness and special consideration, there are some features to this property that lend itself to that.
Okay. Anne?
Yeah, I well, I feel it's unique in that it has that large field across the street. So yes, I I think it it does make it distinguished.
Right. Brian?
I think it's unique in that particular area because just like my street, the surveyors in the 50s didn't know how to draw a straight line.
I'll take that as a yes.
Yes.
All right, Bob?
Yes, you've got the location of the the well and a prior owner removed the garage.
Right. For a good purpose. Owing to these special conditions of the property distinguishing it from other property in the area, do we concur that there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the property? This is a setback issue. Brian?
Hate the question. Answer yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say yes, I agree.
Okay, Anne?
Yes, I don't like the question.
All right. And is the proposed use a reasonable one? Anne? The garage?
Yes, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say yes.
I agree that the proposed use certainly is a reasonable one for this property. Well, you've met the criteria necessary for a variance on this application. Does anyone have anything else to add? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I think we're just waiting for motion Rogers.
Motion Mitchell.
Bob, get in there first, Brian, so.
I make a motion that we accept the variance as requested as written.
Second, Brian.
Moved and seconded to approve the variance as presented. Any questions on the motion? Beverly?
Anne Karizinski?
I vote to approve.
Brian Rutgers?
I changed my name to Brian Rutgers Mitchell and yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Pete Tevo?
Yes.
The motion passes with all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right. Do we have any other business to attend to?
Make a motion. So attentive to us throughout. Almost at 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, all right. I think I heard a motion, did I?
Yes.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Everybody, Beverly.
Everyone made the motion.
Pick one.
Okay.
And it's been seconded by Bob.
I got it.
All right. No, no, no discussion on this motion. All those in favor? I mean, Beverly, can you call it?
Sure, I certainly can. Anne?
Aye.
Brian?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete, Eric?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
There you go. Meeting adjourned.
Eric wins for best background.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Excellent.
Thank you, everyone. Once again, we earned every penny of our pay.
Every single dollar.
Right.